So I want to make sure we're all.
Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to our council meeting for Monday, November 14, 2022.
Present.
Yep. Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the packets this evening for after minutes from our previous meeting on October 24. Questions or comments or changes, otherwise I receive a motion to please do not at this time.
Second.
Motion is second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. We have a few items this evening. Commissioner Polk, are you taking recognition with Commander Chris Hughes and Sergeant Diana Campbell?
I am.
Or reviewing and revising Pales Park Police Policy under Lexi Polk?
Uh, they've done that, I am.
Excellent. Look at you. This is never going to work. Merciful. Good job. Good Lord almighty. I could. Stay. Hi. It's my honor tonight as the Commissioner of Public Health and Safety, which makes me the Police Commissioner, to recognize a few people. So we'll start with the person who's standing up, not me, you. I'd like to recognize Sergeant Diana Campbell, who has, along with Commander Chris Hughes, worked to focus on national policing, best practices and guidelines, and reviewing and revising the Pales Park Police Policies. For over a year, these two people have worked diligently to use a new system that we subscribe to called Lexi Polk, which gives us, as first responders, updates on a variety of different issues that pertain to the way that we perform our police duties. The cool thing about Lexi Polk is that the updates come to us in real time. So this is something that we don't have to study state legislation and national legislation through the subscription with Lexi Polk. The information comes to us, but it still needs to be collated and then inserted into our code of practice. And that's what Commander Hughes and Sergeant Campbell have been doing for the last year. So they've spent multiple hours working on policies based on nationwide standards and best practices. And I'd like to just thank them for their incredible hard work. When they'd rather be out policing, they are doing the voodoo that they do so well. So I give you Sergeant Diana Campbell and a certificate.
Thank you. But really, Commander Chris Hughes, he's the mastermind of my office, so he really deserves most of this.
Fair enough. He'll get it too. Okay, we got another one. We got several. Recognition of Pales Park Lions Club First Responder 2022 Award Recipient, Pales Park's Police Investigator Ross Chibi. So we were honored to attend an event hosted by the Lions Club a week or so ago, during which Officer Ross Chibi, a member of the Pales Park Police Department, was recognized with honors as a meritorious service and dedication to the Village of Pales Park Police Department, and congratulated him on his more recent promotion to investigator. Ross is actually an interesting guy for more reasons than you might think. So Ross started here at the Pales Park Police Department as a cadet when he was 14, and he's a little bit older now. Then he moved to being a front desk clerk, then a part-time police position, and he's been a full-time police officer with us for over 10 years. That's really incredibly difficult to believe. It's probably harder for you to believe than it is for me because I've been here the whole time. He's also, while he was working full-time, obtained his bachelor's degree from Lewis. His dedication as an officer and investigator is the model professional working every sensitive case, one at a time, with the victim, the suspect, and state's attorneys. He certainly goes above and beyond his responsibilities, making certain that each case gets that attention to detail and excellence. So Ross, I really appreciate sticking with us for all these years, thick and thin, and there's your plaque. You got it again. They only let me do this once a year, so this is why we have all of these tonight. The third recognition I'd like to give tonight is to Paul Metcalf. Now, Paul Metcalf may not be a sworn officer at the Pales Park Police Department, but Mr. Metcalf performs an incredibly important job, and that is that he is the asset that is critical to our mission. He's the fleet mechanic. So I don't remember when we actually did it. It's been a while, but we decided to go with our own mechanic instead of shipping cars out and having them off the street for sometimes weeks at a time. And Paul Metcalf is the current person who gets the responsibility for doing all those things. So he recognizes that the Police Department faces a range of challenges, and he works very diligently to make sure that, number one, our patrol vehicles are in top condition, and addresses problems when they occur so that they can be put back into commission. And I believe he also does some stuff for Public Works, but it's not as important. Did you give him a little more? There you go. So, Mr. Metcalf and young Metcalf, I assume? Your grandson Metcalf? I want to thank you for your service for the team, and we appreciate everything you do for the village. Now, the rest of you are wondering, why the heck are all these other people here? And they're here because we're proud of our newest Community Emergency Response Team Program graduates. So, under the direction of Officer Frank Flores, who I believe is sitting in the middle over there.
Yes, sir.
We finally, after postponing it for some sort of viral event that occurred, were able to hold our first Citizens Emergency Response Team, or CERT, C-E-R-T, and we had a number of participants who graduated, and I just wanted to take a minute and recognize them. Just a quick note about the CERT program. It educates people about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact their area, and trains them in basic disaster response skills: fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, disaster medical operation, basic first aid, and hopefully, using the training that they've learned, they can assist others not only in their village, but at their workplace or during a family event when professional responders are not immediately available to help. So I certainly appreciate the commitment of the following CERT graduates, and you have to come up because someone wants to take a picture. So Kristen Bauer. Kathleen Brouss. Corinne Chavez. Cynthia Chibi. Kelly Duck. Lauren Jan. Grace Mieszak. Costa Nogos. Sue Reven. Amanda Sink. Robert Sundervater. Nancy Swingle. Otherwise, you're going to be out the door. Come stand over here. I don't fight much. Todd Walters. And Jacob Sekulas. Mary? I don't see your name. Can I see? You might want to recheck that last. Yeah, there are a little. Everybody smooch up. I'll move. You can smoosh together. Oh, it was a rough 20 hours. Let me tell you. There are some cool pictures, though. I like the fire extinguisher. Well, again, thank you all for your service. Hopefully, you know, it'll be a minute or two before we have to call you all out, but we'll sleep better knowing that you're there for us. Thank you again. And that concludes the presentations at home. You can stay if you want to. Although you can stay here. Feel free to come back for a year, the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of every month. Monday. Don't come out today if you won't be.
No, we did that on the red wing.
Okay. Excellent.
Only one round of cookies.
My mic's not working.
Sounds like it's working.
The last item of recognition, public officials' appointments and presentations, is an appointment of Kirsten Meter to the Plan Commission to fill a vacancy with a term to expire June 1st, 2026. I've got some information. Kirsten Meter is a lifelong resident of Pales Park, third generation. Kirsten Meter studied political science and women's studies at the University of Michigan in Iowa and continued her education at the University of Illinois at the College of Law in Champaign, Arizona. Her lifelong residency in Pales Park and education would be an asset to the Plan Commission. So I would seek a motion to approve the appointment of Kirsten Meter to the Plan Commission to fill a vacancy with a term to expire on June 1st, 2026.
Second.
Hearing a motion is second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Kirsten, for agreeing to CERT, and we look forward to you coming into the Plan Commission. Whose mic is beating bad because that's... Hold me over the edge. It could be me. My mic is much more sensitive than it's ever been. That's better. Thank you. I was always told I have to be very close to it. I'll just go a little bit further away. Consent agenda. Better. Think a little better. All items on the consent agenda are routine and are to walk forward with the direction of the board commissioners and will be enacted with a motion if discussion is decided that I don't need to remove from the consent agenda and need to separate. Item A, to approve A S number 2 for the 2022 runway and drainage project to kill by a million dollars, $117,195 of cents. B, to continue consideration of petition for disconnection for 13105 Main Street at the December 12, 2022 Village Council Meeting. C, to approve Resolution 2022 R7, title of a resolution authorizing the acceptance of musical compliance report for someone's public ad, 95,095. D, to approve payment of invoices on a wordless date, November 14, 2022, remit of $348,099.75 cents. Finally, E, to approve a supplemental award on this date, November 14, 2022, for annual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers, remit of $400,095,55 of cents. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Sorry. Hearing a question. Second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Walter. Yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. May I have some old business we can talk about in the council? Board Commissioner and Committee Recommendations, meaning ordinance here regarding short-term rentals. Who's handling this item? This would have been Commissioner Wade. Okay, so I guess that's me. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm so used to that. Yes. Commissioner, I apologize. Yes, Commissioner Wade.
Yes. Tonight, to approve ordinance 2022-19, an ordinance amending Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1260, Sections 1260.08 and 1260.09, Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1262, Section 1262.99, Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1264, Section 1264.04, Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1282, Section 1282.11, of the Pales Park Village Code in regard to short-term rentals and accessory structures. The ordinance states that on October 20, 2022, the Plan Commission held a public hearing and the Village approves and adopts the findings and recommendations of the Plan Commission and incorporates such findings and recommendations. One, to amend Section 1260.08, definitions, to remove definition of tourist home. Two, amend Section 1260.08, definitions, to add definitions for short-term rental. Three, add Section 1260.09 regarding prohibition of short-term rental uses and related regulations pertaining to penalties. Four, amend Section 1262.99 to increase fine from $500 to $750. Five, amend Section 1282.11 to delete subsection 1282.11D in its entirety. And six, to add Section 1264.04 to authorize variances as it pertains to the location of accessory structures, including swimming pools. A little background, the Village Council referred the first five proposed tax amendments to the Plan Commission at the September 12, 2022 council meeting. These proposed amendments all involve the issue of short-term rentals. There have been a number of short-term rentals, either single-family residents or partner residents, being rented out to guests for a short period of time, such as rentals found on Airbnb in Pales Park that have recently resulted in neighbor complaints and the need for police involvement. In addition, the Village Council had referred the sixth proposed tax amendment to the Plan Commission at the September 26, 2022 council meeting. This proposed tax amendment relates to authorized variances as it pertains to the location of accessory structures and swimming pools. I would also like to note that the Plan Commission did recommend on a vote of four nothing for these proposed tax amendments. Do we have any questions at this time? With no questions, I hope to approve ordinance 2022-19, an ordinance amending Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1260, Sections 1260.08 and 1260.09, Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1262, Section 1262.99, Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1264, Section 1264.04, and Part 12, Title 6, Chapter 1282, Section 1282.11, of the Village Code in regard to short-term rentals and accessory structures.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? Will the clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Commissioner Walter. Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Mission information and updates, Public Works and Streets preparation report, Commissioner Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have a few items on the agenda. The first regarding an agreement with IZOM, IXOM, formerly known as SolarBee, for a three-year servicing program for maintenance of the mixing system for our underground water reservoir. Our underground water reservoir has a solar-powered mixing system that eliminates problems associated with temperature differences in stored layers of water in the underground tank. IZOM will provide inspections yearly, which include maintenance of mechanical, structural, and electronic systems. This service includes all repairs and upgrades required during the three-year term and onsite response for emergencies. The contract was renewed in 2018 for a three-year period at the cost of $7,605. The current contract cost is $6,396 with protection against inflation, and this is covered in the water fund budget, so it is less than we pay for. Does anybody have any questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from IXOM, or IZOM. Option 2, the three-year maintenance program with inflation protection at the cost of $6,396.
Sergeant. Hearing a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Walter. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Yes, motion carries.
Second item is regarding approving a proposal from Comfort Zone Heating and Cooling to provide units to heat and cool the recreation building offices on the first floor. That would be the upper floor. For anybody who has ever been in there, it's a very old building and desperately needs some heat and air in there. For several years, we've been examining different alternatives to provide heat and air conditioning for those two offices, and costs have ranged anywhere from $15,000 to $35,000, and a couple required extensive electric upgrades. Recently, Public Works replaced the heating and cooling unit for the office space in the garage, and at that time, we asked our vendor, Comfort Zone, to look at the recreation offices and quote us a similar system for the spaces. We have two proposals that they supplied. The cost for each office using the existing electric is $4,875.28. Based on the prices we had received, we had budgeted over $30,000. We budgeted $30,000 for this work. Obviously, this is a huge savings. Each room is $48.75.28. Does anybody have any questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two proposals from Comfort Zone in the amount of $4,875.28, which totals $9,750.56, to furnish heat and air conditioning to the recreation building offices.
Sergeant. Hearing a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Walter. Yes. Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Mahoney.
Yes, motion carries.
All right, this last one's a little extensive. I apologize in advance, but in order to give you the whole background, I'll have to read all of this. It's regarding fiber optic right of entry and carrier equipment point of presence site agreement. The village is being requested to approve three right of entry agreements with Cook County for the purpose of extending fiber network to the village's administration building, which is the capter center here, the Public Works Garage at 8912 West 131st Street, and the village's water pumping station at 12101 Southwest Highway. These sites will be included in the Chicago Southland Fiber Network Expansion Project. This project initially began in 2012, intended to offer high-speed internet access to municipal governments, schools, and businesses in the south suburbs. Cook County has secured a state grant and is using some of its ARPA funding to expand this Chicago Southland Fiber Network. Benefiting from this fiber build will be community colleges located in the Chicago Southland region, as well as public safety and other municipal facilities in 17 communities. If you want to check out their website, it's csfn.us. They have been, the system's been installed in the right way along 121st Street, 131st, and Southwest Highway. Currently, the capter administrative center and police center are connected to the recreation center via a village-owned fiber line. The capter administrative center building is connected to the Public Works Garage via a VPN connection, which is a virtual private network, and describes the opportunity to establish a protective network connection when using public networks, in this case, through cable. This Chicago Southland Fiber Network project will enable all the village facilities to be connected via fiber optic cable. Fiber optic cable is a better option than cable because fiber is faster and more reliable. Fiber optic technology uses small, flexible strands of glass to transmit information as light. The strands are wrapped in bundles and protected with layers of plastic, making fiber faster, clearer, and able to travel great distances. Any construction expenses to install the fiber resource at the village hall, the Public Works Building, and the pump station will be covered by Cook County. There will be no cost to Pales Park. Through this fiber network, there will be the opportunity to have direct secure connection to the leads and CAD systems with the Cook County Sheriff's Dispatch Center for the benefit of the village's Police Department. Circus agreements to any other locations in the current expansion segment are not being sent until after construction is complete. Construction of this network is anticipated to be completed in December of 2022. The budgetary numbers to provide one GBPS, which has something to do with bandwidth, to the village hall with private GPBS transports to the Public Works Building and pump station. This is the most economical solution that provides Pales Park its own private network and no use of public cable or public fiber systems. So, the monthly cost breaks down for the village hall as $895 a month, the Public Works Garage $450 a month, and the pump station $450 a month. And to compare that, Public Works is currently costing us $1,122.79 a month. Capter Center is costing us $1,076.24, and our pump station does not have any right now. So, at this point, we would be saving money and have a more secure, hopefully faster and clearer network of transport. Any questions? No, that was a non. If not, I will make my motion to approve the fiber optic right of entry and fiber optic carrier equipment POK point of presence site agreements for the capter administrative center and police center at 8999 West 123rd Street, Public Works Garage at 8912 West 131st Street, and the Public Works Pump Station at 12101 Southwest Highway.
Sergeant. Hearing a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the wall?
Commissioner Walter. Yes. Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Yep.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries.
That concludes everything on my report, other than to just remind everyone, shipping season is over until April, so please do not put your branches out for us to pick up. Your waste carrier will take them still in your garbage can. And have a happy Thanksgiving, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wade?
Thank you. First, I want to wish everybody and tell everyone to enjoy a safe holiday season. Holiday safety is an issue that burns brightest from late November to mid-January, when families gather, parties are scheduled, and travel increases. Take some basic precautions to ensure your family remains safe and injury-free throughout the season. Never leave burning candles unattended or sleep in a room with lit candle. Keep candles out of reach of children. Don't burn candles near trees, curtains, and/or any other flammable items. Don't burn trees, wreaths, or wrapping paper in the fireplace. Check and clean the chimney and fireplace area at least once a year. The building department processed fifteen permits from October 19th to November 9th, resulting in $4,081.10 in permit fees. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. All of your help and safety. Commissioner Paul?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the police activity report from 24th of October through 13th of November the year of our Lord 2022, with 2,896 calls per service, so up a little bit, but we had a couple extra days in there. Seventeen citizen assists, an additional seventeen case reports, nineteen accident records, arrested an adult, fortunately no juveniles, did not encounter any vehicles, made eighty-five traffic stops, of which sixty-one of them were for speeding tickets, ten adjudication tickets, thirty moving violations. So, that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to over the last couple of weeks. And then I have a couple of quick announcements. We'll start with the difficult one. So, the night before Thanksgiving in the Payless Park Police Department is known as Black Wednesday, because it is a traditional night for kids coming home from college, reconnecting with their friends, sort of kicks off the party season, as Commissioner Wade alluded to. And Lord almighty, there might be some drinking going on there. So, we'd ask if you're going to go out and party on the night before Thanksgiving, designated driver, if your designated driver's had too much to drink, or someone needs a ride home. Alphard Board is home there. Give us a call, 708-448-2191, and we'll be happy to come, no questions asked, pick you up, drop you off at home. We will not take you to a restaurant, we will not take you to another party, we will not take you to your boyfriend or girlfriend's house, we will take you home. And again, I want to thank Chief Joe Miller and the Payless Park Police Officers for offering this free service. Again, Wednesday evening, the night before Thanksgiving, 708-448-2191. And then, something on a more cheerful note, the Payless Park cadets are in the midst of their Payless Park food drive, so they're accepting non-perishable items, canned goods and boxed goods. While this may seem an opportune moment to clean out your cupboards, I ask that you don't send us anything that you wouldn't consume. In other words, no expired goods, please, because then we just got to get rid of them. There are several locations around town that are accepting donations on behalf of the cadets. I know the library is one of them. So, again, if you would like to support the cadets by contributing to their food drive, it's being acted, it'll be active for a while, and we'll talk about that a couple of times over the next couple of months. Chief Miller? Anything you care to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thanks for your service. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. The council, if I can ask you this, do you have a report to make? I don't have any report tonight. Sir, parrot him.
No, I have no report to you.
Manager, babe?
Nothing to offer?
Excellent. I do have a few announcements. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet this month. Library Board will hold a regular meeting this Wednesday, November 16, at Bydham Library. Payless Plan Arts Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 17, as been canceled. And finally, the Plan Commission will hold a regularly scheduled meeting on November 17, 2022. That's this Thursday. There will be a public hearing, PC 2022-04, for a commercial plan involving commercial construction and landscaping with the property 9520 West Honor 31st Street for proposed valvoline instant oil change facility. In addition, the applicant for the WuPaul's parking lot expansion request, that's PC 2022-02, has requested their continued to be summer plan commissioned. So, McCord Gallery Cultural Center Holiday Shop, get into the Hobbies, McCord Gallery Cultural Centers Holiday Shop, open house on Friday, November 18, that's this Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Enjoy shopping for handcrafted artisan gifts while enjoying wine, advertisers, and holiday music. The Center Holiday Show, make your calendar for the Center's Holiday Art Show on Sunday, November 20, noon to 4:00 p.m. It's a great chance to buy handmade gifts for friends and family while supporting the Center, the art, teachers, and students. The art show will take place throughout the labs and the lawn camp at the Center for the Arts. And this announcement reminded me that yesterday afternoon, I attended the Center Annual Meeting. Community Center Foundation marked its 90th anniversary. It was established in 1932 by Paul Sanders, who was the grandfather of the current executive director, Dave Sanders. They do amazing things at the Center, if you're not familiar with it. They have a great website, they use it, all kinds of activities. There was really a very large crowd for this annual meeting. And it was tremendous to watch and just be a witness to all the great work they do. So, very proud to have them in Payless Park, and I check them out when I can. Payless Area Chamber of Commerce is having their inaugural majestic 5K 10-mile trail runs. This is such a great idea. People kind of lamented the fact that we no longer do that Thanksgiving turkey trot. This is really a great kind of substitute replacement for this one. My office, my law office, is right next to the Cal State Park, to the Lake Catherine. It's a wonderful walk. I try to do it at least once a day. Beautiful place that... In their Payless site. So, on Saturdays, December 3, 2022, the Payless Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting the majestic trail runs, 5K walk, 10 mile. This event will take place along the beautiful Cal State Trail and Lake Catherine. More information can be found at wwwpaylessareachamber.org. So, promises to be a fun event. The Payless Chamber has really become a dynamic organization, and they're doing good things to me. Oh, one last thing. There's a grand opening for Melton Tip, which is a business located at 13030 South LaGrange Road. I was by there, I think, Saturday night. The place was hopping, it's open. The grand opening is going to be this Friday, November 18, at 8:00 p.m. I will be there with the Payless Area Chamber of Commerce christening this new business. The store is beautiful, and they put a lot of tenant improvements into it, so I'm hoping this business is quite successful, and I hope you patronize it. Citizens and visitors counter period. Anyone from the audience like to address the council? All right. At this point, I would seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moving.
Hearing a motion in a second, will the clerk please call the wall?
Someone second?
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Paul?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Yes. Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all, and good evening. Nice meeting.
Be safe.
Great to recognize all those who served.
Sorry, Mr. Wallace.
What a great service.
I have something for you, though.